Best case scenario, you never have to use.
Ben, I make a motion that will approve this request for the sale of your SIM card activation.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any of them? Okay, next we got a request for Cares Act funding.
I've received two additional requests from outside agencies asking the county to consider providing some of their Cares Act funding to assist them with operations. First one was the Lee County Health Department. They've asked that you consider providing the funding to construct glass partitions with sliding windows at their patient intake stations. They have three of those. They obtained a quote for the work back in December of 2019. They actually did this for all three locations, Lee, Wise, and Scott. The quote for Lee County was just under $5,500. Dr. Cantrell has advised that their offices in Wise and Scott eventually were approved for funding by those respective counties. But by that time, the price had increased by approximately 15% due to increased material costs between the time of quote and the date that they were approved. So I included a copy of the price quote that they got from Wise Glass and Mirror. Again, just under $5,500. If you apply a 15% increase in material, it's going to put it up to over $6,300 probably at a minimum, maybe a little bit more. Secondly, the Woodway Water Authority has requested the board's consideration of funding up to $15,000 for construction of a drive-through window service at their office. And I've submitted a copy of the email request that they sent me on that. One of the things that was presented last month regarding General District and J and D R Court Judges, I don't think, I know that there were several things in the letter. I don't know that there was any discussion on one of those because it had been brought up separately, at least to me, at a previous time, was the request for a plexiglass partition along the bench up there, just to provide a shield, basically separation between people in the court and people up on the bench, the judge and clerks and others that worked at. I'd asked Gary Collinsworth to look at the possibility of being able to do that. Basically, the cost is a little bit of wood and plexiglass. He had, he was getting estimates on it. I'm not sure if he got the final, but I think it's probably close. Materials would be less than $1,000 to do that. And transfer station employees could install it. It would be temporary. It wouldn't be mounted permanently. It'd be something that could be removed later. Cost of plexiglass has gone considerably since then. I was sure.
How do you pass documents through?
The, it would have, if I could get up and show you. We'd look at it differently. One was to do a cutout into plexiglass, but what Gary recommended, because this is an angled bench, you're basically going to have three pieces that had to be done. Then we would try to mount it into the wood, not down into the counter, but into the wood because we feel like you could repair the wood easier than the countertop at a later date once you take it down. But you basically use a series of three or four blocks of wood here to build it up, lay the plexiglass in a track that you drill into it. And so the plexiglass would ride up above all the way across the year, just a few inches enough to pass documents through. This panel would come over to approximately right here. Then the panel in front of the judge himself or him or her would be in the outside panel to move away from this. If you're trying to send it back, it would be right up against that and could prevent the building to pass documents through and then move back to the back track over there and across. That was his recognition. Also, it would give, at this point, it would provide a separation. In other words, this sheet of plexiglass would come over to here, this one would be here. So there'd be an air gap in between here. They basically stacked it up. One of the things that Judge Jenkins had stated was that in Scott County, they had a little bit of a gap like that and it did allow sound to travel around it a little bit better so that the sound got out into the courtroom a little bit better from the bench. But those are, the two of those are new requests and that one is just carryover from the last one.
We got a blank.
I'd like to see an Excel spreadsheet of all the money that we've spent on COVID from the Cares money so far. I know you've probably got that, I assume, but we've talked a lot about it. We've had probably literally half a dozen meetings, but several people ask where y'all spend this money on? Well, I can kind of rough it out, some of it in my head, but we've spent on so many things, I don't know what we're up to now. There's some money that we'd set aside. I believe we told the 4H people that we could give them more money if, I don't remember what the contingency was. We talked about the NBOs, you know, got the quote now, we still haven't spent that, but I think there's a lot of money that we've set aside saying if we had enough, we were going to spend it on that stuff. So before we spend any more money, I'd like to see what we have left to spend.
There's roughly about $250,000 after broadband extension contracts, the allocation for fire and rescue, and what we have actually spent to date or what's been obligated. And that includes what is set aside for the towns of Penning Gap and St. Charles.
So the NBO money would come?
The NBO money would come from that and anything else.
Hundred and some thousand dollars for that.
Depending on what the board ultimately chooses today.
I would rather see, and I think the other thing, are we going to do the same for driving water if they ask?
This request probably just, just as the board package was being prepared. And actually, I was a day late in getting the board package out because I was out most of the day, the day before at me. But that one, that was a last minute. And I just, I tossed it in there.
I guess I'd like a motion to title it and for us to get an Excel spreadsheet. Can we see something like that in the next week on what we?
Well, if you want to itemize everything that has been purchased, I basically had a recap sheet that I brought to our last meeting, our last recess meeting when it was discussed and was working from those numbers. And it gives you some ballpark figures on that.
Whatever it is, I'd like it to be in some form that the public can understand it. For example, on Pennington's $300,000, I mean, I don't need to say maybe lots of dollars.
And I didn't, I lumped together what the county had spent for clean, additional cleaning supplies for, everything that we had spent on items like that was probably was, I know, was less than $20,000. So, I mean, you know, I can do you a general spreadsheet. It won't take forever because we won't list every invoice for every pack of mask or every bottle of cleaning solution or something like that. But yeah, that, we could put that together in a short period of time. And we finalized the contracts on the broadband, things like that now. So I've got definite numbers on those rather than just ballpark numbers. But it's going to fall into, as I said, about the $250,000 range minus anything you do on the multiband originators or anything like that.
Do we know what the automatic doors are going to cost?
Automatic doors are $50, $50,000.
Does your, does that come out at $250?
Yes.
Did I make, did I make a motion? I don't remember if I did or I just?
I think I did. I got a little bit, I think as far as the health department goes, we need, I think we need to move on now because they get a lot of traffic in and out there. And with the General District Court, J, J D Court, the D dollar court. I mean, that's a minimal cost.
Yeah, your $20 buck rubs about $7,000, $8,000 buck. Twenty to two.
And the contingency with the cooperative extension, that was included in the numbers that I had given you previously. And I haven't had any follow-up from them regarding that. They've never, never responded back. The contingency on that was $10,500, which was half of the request. Contingent on 75% of the other participating localities in the 4H center providing similar funding.
Now, what is the situation with the 4H center? Are they open?
Again, I've not had any correspondence back from them since they were at your meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
I made a motion to take that to later in the meeting.
Okay, table to later on in, take it to table to later on in the meeting. I'll say that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any of both. Next, we got the Cares funding reimbursement request.
At the time of the fact that was issued, I had reimbursement request from the Keelke Fire Department, Keelke Rescue Squad for Cares funding allocated to them. Rescue was in an amount of $16,615.46. Fire submitted invoices for $2,766.95, which would be the full $2,500 of their reimbursement. Since the time the board package went out, of course, we did have Stickleville, we had a proposal from Stickleville Fire on several things. But I'm going to take that first item that they submitted as their request. But I also have invoices that have come in from Thomas Walker Fire, Thomas Walker Rescue, Lee County Rescue, Penning Gap Unit, and I think there's one more in there, Johnson Rescue. So, and Johnson Rescue came in as late as yesterday. So most of them, there wasn't a lot there, so I reviewed them pretty quickly. Thomas Walker Fire Department submitted invoices for $1,186.92. That was for masks and sealed seam coveralls. I saw no problem with either of any of that. Thomas Walker Rescue or Lee County Rescue, Thomas Walker Unit submitted documentation on their paid staff from the time of March 1 to September 25th, which exceeded the $22,000 allocated to them. Penning Gap Unit of Lee County Rescue submitted similar documentation on their paid staff for, I think the total they submitted was over 20, it exceeded the $22,000 that they'd been allocated. Johnson Rescue Squad submitted invoices for $22,329.04. The largest portion of that, $15,000, was for used ambulance. A lot of the other stuff I got no issue with, but some of it, some of the Walmart deals and some of the things that were purchased, I don't know how it's tied to COVID and that thing. But again, I just got these in yesterday, so. And then Stickleville, their request was to construct in their fire hall to complete the work on the shower in the bathroom to be used for basically decontamination after being on a hazardous side or something of that nature. They had a quote, I think, for doing the work for like $3,200. That would cover all of the $2,500 if that's what they're requesting to use it for. And having just handed you all of these, I'll again indicate, I asked the question at either the last recess meeting or the one before whether or not you want to continue to handle these this way or if you want to do this somehow by committee to review these rather than having a big stack of invoices to look through individually.
Well, Charlie's the accountant. I feel like this is down his alley.
I got a question, Mr. Poe, about, we can't use this money for, to pay people with, right?
They have paid staff. They have submitted in their letter what they, their documentation or their justification for the funds as stated in some of the guidance documents. So again, a lot of this is interpretation. And that's why it's hard to just get the invoices and look and say, okay, yeah, that's approved. Now, some of it's pretty simple to say that, but a lot of these things are things that really need to be looked at a little more in depth.
I agree, yeah.
Would y'all be opposed to Stacey giving us some guidance on it, taking it to a closed session?
Well, I don't know if she'd be able to in closed session, would she?
And whether or not she's got the documents in front of her and ought to access to them, I don't know.
I don't necessarily need to know, but.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's really, it's really, the question is the law on those guidelines.
Yeah, the interpretation of the guidelines.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that because I should, you know, I'd say those are.
And to make it work a little smoother, maybe if, I mean, I have no problem with providing you these each month, but then I don't, you know, I'd hate to have to wait another month to be able to give you payment for the ones that are good to go.
I'd be fine with going ahead and approving the ones that the county administrator is okay with and the ones that he's, that are questionable to him, take it later and ask Stacey's opinion on.
I would be too. And I bet I have to review all of it.
Well, most of them were pretty short in the point. I mean, Jonesville's, that we received, that Jonesville's is the one that is the most cumbersome to work through. And the majority of theirs, I think, is good. I think there's a few little mindings, you can call it nitpicking or whatever, but if you get audited, that's what auditors do, they nitpick.
I, you know, personally, I'd like to have time to review myself before I take any action on it.
That's, that's.
Would you want to be part of that committee?
I wouldn't care to be.
I think that would be a good idea if you and Charlie want to be part of that committee and you all, y'all have a problem with that? I think it'd be great if y'all want to do that. I'm sure Dane'd appreciate that.
I would. I'd like to have another set of eyes looking at it, not just my opinion. That's not good.
You know, like I said at the beginning, we need to be careful.
Exactly.
With this money, no one has to eat it.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Now, I did, for those of you other than Mr. Hunter, we got the memorandum of understanding agreement back from the town of Pennington. I have Jonesville's back too. There was a minor amendment made to Pennington's, but it was not a substantial change. It was just some language. Excuse me, Mr. Coggin and Ms. Muncy reviewed that and they signed it. My feelings on the town's money, of course, we agreed that would be by reimbursement basis. They submit their bills. Pennington has already submitted about $70,000 worth of bills. And they signed that memorandum of understanding accepting any and all responsibility and liability in the event that any of their expenditures are disallowed or disqualified. And I would recommend we just pay the amount of their request for reimbursement as soon as we receive it, if there's no objection.
You say you have given this door?
Yeah, I agree with that.
If it's locked on this side, you can't get in. It's high scope protected.
Okay, motion to recess. I'll say that. We can resume now, I guess. Guess we can continue where we, we were discussing about the approval and the, all the COVID re-rescue and we're going to go ahead and make a motion to approve a committee? Is that what we need to do?
Uh, yeah, appropriately, based on what you discussed.
Okay. Based on, and I appreciate their willingness to do this, but based on their decision to volunteer, I'd make a motion for Mr. Larry Mosley and Mr. Charles Smith to serve on the committee to help Mr. Poe, looking over to help approve these requests that come in from fire and rescue departments. I guess any other assistance that you may need.
Well, I'd also suggest you put Ms. Muncy on there as well.
Okay. And anybody else?
I'll say that.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any of both. And anybody back there in the stands, feel free to kind of volunteer.
Pretty cool to do it.
Okay. And I appreciate you guys for volunteering to do that. That's a pretty big undertaking, for sure. Well, I was, we got reports and recommendations of our county attorney. She's not here, but I guess she gave you anything to report on, did she?
No.
How about our other attorney? She give you anything to report on? Okay, reports and recommendations to the county administrator?
A couple things. Getting ready to advertise for bids on police vehicles for this year. I'm not sure, I don't know that we discussed during budget time whether there's, whether you want to go back out for the utility vehicles again or for sedans or for both. So I just wanted some guidance on what I need to spec.
Well, I know coming from how the, and the sheriff, all I've heard so far is SUVs, but have you all already gone? No. I guess it doesn't hurt to put it out for both.
Yeah, I put it out for both. I've heard from some of the officers that SUVs are good, which I expected they'd like the SUVs. One of them mentioned to me that would save more maintenance than dragging bottoms and taking the cars to places they shouldn't be. What I wondered about is, is as we replace investigators' vehicles, do the investigators need an SUV or are we not there often? Make sure the officers have it set to investigate. I mean, most of their ride is to the courthouse and meet somebody for a drug buy. I mean, I don't know how much the investigators are going off the road.
We just replaced theirs three or four years ago.
How old do they typically?
It has been a while. They have the old, what they had been driving, majority of them were the Chevrolet Equinox. And those were several years old. Theirs are not replaced like the rotation of Roadoff Civvians.
Those don't have the interceptor packages in them?
No, those are just standard Explorers. They're not the police issue.
My good feeling is that you need a mix of cars and SUVs both.
I agree with that, Mr. Coggin.
Well, I'll just go ahead and do specs on both. Mr. Coke, the treasurer, came by this afternoon. Do you recall requested to purchase a printer for the front desk operation there that they could set up to run instead of the old dot matrix printers when they're doing tax receipts and having to print, sit there and print out one per sheet? He was trying to be able to economize a little and create a deal where they could print multiple tax receipts on one sheet of eight and a half by eleven paper. We've had the printer for a few weeks, but the issue's been being able to get it programmed that we're able to print the receipt. So finally today, they were able to get that, make that happen. I think Bright Associates had been working on the issues of the software provider that we use for the mainframe. So he came down to show me that they had successfully printed one and then proceeded to ask if we were going to go ahead and buy the other two for the front desk. And I said, well, wait a minute, we, the board said to buy one as a test to make sure it would work. So it has worked. To buy two more, I think those printers were, what, about $180 a piece? I think that's about what they were. So be another $350 to $400 to buy two more and put it at the front service counter.
Has he still not used his part-time money? There was, I want to say, $3,000 or $4,000 allocated to him and at one time he hasn't used any of them?
I haven't seen a part-time person down there.
I haven't either.
He hadn't, as of last, I know he hadn't as of last meeting, you know, and I asked him.
We don't have any.
I had tons of them.
Well, you know, if it helps keep people from having to stand in line any longer, they do, then, you know, I think it'd be a good investment to take that money, I might say, from his part-time money.
Yeah, and I commend him for having part-time money available to make the job easier on himself and not spend it just because he had it. I don't know that most department heads would have done that, but I appreciate it.
Do we need a motion for that?
If we're going to use his part-time funds, yes, I would want him, in form of a motion.
I guess that's where we need to do it. I might go ahead and then we take that part-time money, buy it toward the printers. Let's say it, motion. All in favor? Aye, 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 any of both.
Other than that, I have a request for closed session, just a very brief item under personnel. I think that's something I'd need specifically for closed session. To make you aware of one other thing, I was talking to Scott County Telephone today. They are finding in the field the map and addressing guide that we provided, that the school board provided to us on students for homes that did not have service. They are finding, at least in some of the areas they're going, that in some specific areas that have said like four or five out of 10 homes that show no service already have service, or that there's no one moving at that address. So we sort of left it open. We advise them to continue forward with the project, just keep moving forward and we'll look at other areas possibly if they are not able, they're saying by that, they're not going to be able to strictly adhere to the contract that provided 449 connections in that student or public employee category. But we discussed the possibility of being able to pick up some of those other areas if they're not funded by the grant application that we submitted, or maybe even looking at other locations to make those numbers up. But I told them not to delay the project any, that I'll just keep moving forward. But that's just sort of an update on that, and they are working on it. But other than that, just a, just a brief few minutes on personnel in closed session.
You have anything?
That's it.
Okay, recommendations, reports and recommendations of the board? Mr. Smith?
On the issue, Mr. Poe, of cameras, we've looked on.
On the, uh, issue, Mr. Poe, with cameras, we focused on that months ago for Blackwater. Has Allen Bailey sent you anything on that?
Uh, I've just got what he sent me previously. I was gonna do it in-house in our office and select one of them and move on, get them installed.
Yeah, 'cause I asked him a few weeks ago to send you one that he picked out of all the ones that he sent you for us to go ahead and send that to you?
No.
Is there any reason we can't have that done by Friday to pick one and order it?
Oh, yeah, I think we can do that. I, I would like to confer with Mr. Collinsworth, 'cause he, he deals with the cameras they use over there. He was off today, I'm not sure if he'll be here tomorrow or not, uh, had family issue come up, but, but we'll try to get that resolved. I've looked over them, it appeared to me, most of them to be very similar to one another, so I think we can just select one and go. I just wanted to look, make sure, have him review it, make sure there wasn't a problem with any one of them that he's ran into before.
That's fine with me, but I like calendars and deadlines. Can we have that done by next Friday, for sure?
Yes, oh, yeah.
All right. The porta john at the landfill that the prisoners used when we had prisoners, do we still have that there? The, the prisoners that came to do recycling, do we still pay for that porta john to be there?
Oh, it's a recycling building?
No, there was one at the transfer station, at the new facility, it's a transfer station that was just for the inmates.
I'll have to check on that.
I don't see, if, if it is there, and I hope that it's not, but if it is there, that's about ninety bucks a month that we don't need to be paying for, 'cause they were the ones that were using it. Uh, I don't know if, I assume the marketing employees go inside and use the restroom?
I'm not certain on that.
If they aren't, and that's the reason that we have the porta john, if we have the porta john, uh, I guess my motion and recommendation would be that they walk inside and use it so we can save them money on the porta john. I'll make that form of motion.
Say it, all in favor? Aye, any of them?
The terminal doors, we talked about that last month. I know he's been working on the Jasper, is it, voting house?
Uh, Robbins Chapel.
Robbins Chapel. Is there any reason we can't have that done by the end of November?
Oh, no, no, at the end of November, we should have done it.
Did you look?
It's obviously a thing to do.
Did you look at the issue that I was talking about, about the door sticking and hanging open going out into the parking lot?
Uh, that door has done that for years. Uh, I'm not, we just have to look at the, the adjustments on it, the bottom brushes as well as that, and see, and it may be that the, uh, the pull arm, uh, may need to be adjusted a little bit to make it a little bit stronger. But that was an issue when the PSA was down there too. You just, sometimes you have to push that door a little bit to make sure it's locked.
We passed a motion about the airport fence and the spraying and or bush hogging on the east part of the airport, probably April or May. Have we put that out to bids yet?
No, I haven't.
What, what's, what's the issue with it?
Are we gonna use local funds to do it, or are we gonna try to use airport fund, I mean state funds, or how, how are you gonna proceed with it?
Can we use state funds to do it?
If we have to submit, uh, the project, we have to have the bids and the quotes, we can submit to them. Now, whether or not they have any funding for that right now, I don't know.
I feel like it's one of those things we have to do, whether we pay for it or whether somebody else pays for it. We just, I mean, the fence is literally getting ruined and it just can't keep, keep going, and I guess we missed the chance. I'm guessing if you're spraying it, you have to spray while things aren't dormant.
You don't wanna spray with the porta john.
I, I just wanna get something moving on that, 'cause we just got our approaches back, as I understand it, and I don't wanna lose them again because the growth is too high on the east end of the, of the airport, and don't wanna lose the fence. On the county code, uh, putting that out for bids to, recut about the code, uh, the last word was that we had to count the approximate number of...
I wanted to be able to provide an approximate number. I had started on that, but I have been occupied with other issues since then. I'll try to get back on it and get a...
Is that...
Have a count by the end of next week and get a bid out.
Are you doing that personally?
Yes.
Okay.
'Cause not everything necessarily counts as a code amendment.
Internet in the courtroom, we talked about that, I think in August or July in our meeting when we talked about using COVID money, we were talking about live streaming so people could see our meetings without having to come to the courthouse. What's the answer on whether or not there is internet here that's accessible by us? I know there is internet here, but from what I understand, it's the court's internet and that we can't use it. Did you find out about that?
I'll have to check and see, but if, I thought there was an internet drop in here in general, that the courts used previously. I don't think it's part of the spring court system, but I'll double check it.
Who, who would know that?
Uh, let me check with the courts first. I'll check with district and J and D R courts, see if they, what they'll tell me. But I'll check with our tech as well, 'cause he's put the drops in here. I think the one at the bench is, is not spring, or there may be both here. I'll just have to double check. But if there, if either system is available, I mean, even if spring court system is available, that means internet is here, just a matter of splitting off to a separate network.
Okay. The trash crew, we talked about that, did you hear anything back from V-Dot?
I have not. He's not giving me an answer. He was out of the office when I sent him the email. He said he would research that and get back to me, but I've not heard anything from him.
My thinking on that is, which, as you all know, I wasn't in favor of giving V-Dot's blessing on it to start with. I thought it was a good idea, we thought it was a good idea, they're not picking up the trash on the side of the road. It's something that I hear about probably more than any other issue. And I want to do something about it sooner rather than later. It was a problem last winter, and we had inmates that were picking up trash last winter. This year, we haven't had any inmates picking up trash since March, so you can only imagine how bad it's gonna be by next March. And, I mean, if somebody else has a, a better solution, I, I may be fine with that, but I, I wanna make something happen with the litter, either hiring somebody whose job is nothing to pick up trash all day, every day, or to bid it out, one of the two. But I, I just don't feel like we can sit and let V-Dot hold us hostage. Anybody else have any thoughts on it, or a suggestion on how to fix it?
No, I don't. Aren't they letting some inmates out now? I thought it was also more washing vehicles down here, isn't it?
You saw, uh, the court bailiff from Sergeant Carter. He's an inmate part of the day, and he's bailed part of the day. Dale, Dale Thomas is doing most of that.
I, I didn't, I mean, he...
He changes clothes, he's, he's bailed. I told him we was gonna give him a phone, but he...
Yeah.
What would your thoughts be on using some COVID money because we don't have the inmates now to pay an employee to actually just pick up trash? And I understand we have to do that before December thirtieth, but if they pick up trash for a whole month, we're being like they're shaping we are now.
I don't know if it's profitable. I don't either, as long as it's allowable.
Yeah.
Is it billable?
I, I've never made a connection on how that's a response to the COVID issue. I understand COVID keeps the inmates from coming out, but picking up the trash, I'm not sure, I don't, that again, that's an interpretation issue.
Well, let's say it's not allowable, and we spend twenty-five hundred dollars, three thousand dollars only by the end of the year, then we just spent three thousand dollars to pick up the trash, either way you win.
You talking about just hiring somebody off the street?
I mean, I think you'd have to advertise for it, but, uh, I, if our, if it's something that our litter coordinator can't do, and I find that she does, but I just want somebody to pick up trash, makes no difference to me who it is. See, I made, I made my motion last time, or made the suggestion last time, that we get contractors to do it. But the consensus of the board was that we need V-Dot's approval on whether or not we can pick our trash up with the use of contractors. So we know that we can get the litter coordinator or a county employee to do it, 'cause it's been done. She was doing it before, well, I guess it was during COVID, she had the, uh, probationers out there picking up trash in the early...
In the early stages.
In the early stages of COVID, and then one of them got COVID or something and, uh, she got skittish or something and quit doing it. I mean, what's your all's preference on who should do it and when they start? Or is there a way we can get contractors to do it?
Well, I would think that's one way, you know, doing it, is you, you know, using her. I mean, you gotta, you about have to use her with her trip to help pick it up.
Yeah.
I'm just not sure how you get somebody else.
Well, what, what happened exactly with the program that she instituted? It seemed like a great idea.
Well, again, one of the, one of the probationers that she was using, I don't recall if they were tested or someone close to them tested anyway, we sent her to be tested as well because of the exposure, and just sort of backed off of it at that point, simply because of COVID. Uh, she's working on something, she officially plan on coming up now, but we talked about a little bit more today, and I don't think it's anything that requires board action, but we did need, uh, buy-in by the district court judge is to implement something where if she issues, uh, a citation to someone, uh, give them opportunity to do community service prior to their court date. And, uh, if they complete that, so many hours of community service before their court date, then she would recommend charges be dismissed to the judge. She's talked to the Commonwealth attorney about it, but she had not discussed it with, with the court, and I suggested that it would be better to know that the judges would be willing to participate in something like that and, and agree to it on the front end rather than just starting it and then take it into court and see. So that might be a way to get some of that done as, as part of the community service or as the community service require them to do, pick up various locations, but that's gonna be just as people are, are given citations.
If the Commonwealth's okay with it, they don't need the judge. If the Commonwealth's okay with dismissing, and if they pick the trash up, the Commonwealth's got the authority to dismiss the case without the judge's approval, so there's no reason she needs to, to delay on top of the judge. I think she's planning to talk to him tomorrow, so...
You know, the, this adopt the highway thing, it's something that she needs to get busy on with implementing and advertising.
Has anybody told her to do that?
I haven't specifically talked to her about that adopt the highway program, but I can.
Can we do that the next week or so, have a conversation with her about getting that going?
Yeah, I, I talked to her about it tomorrow. Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. I don't know what the public, what the general public's response will be at a time like this.
I understand.
In getting out, but there may be some that's willing to do that. But, but I just, I think it'll, some in the general public that would be willing to volunteer and do that, as they have in the past, may be a little reluctant right now, but, but I'll talk to her about trying to, to, uh, approach some civic groups, the ones that are meeting, or the ones she can get contacts for, or churches or whatever.
Do you have a suggestion on how to get the trash picked up?
Uh, no, not really.
But, you know, he, he, if one person steps up and adopts a section of highway, then they can get people to help them do it, you know, it's like it was in the past, and that, that did help some.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to do the adopt the highway program. What, what happened to it in the first place?
Wasn't that a statement?
It, sort of, yeah. V-Dot, it's still there, but they dropped a lot of emphasis on it. They used to issue signage and groups, you still see some of them are still out there on some secondary roads, people got recognition for it, some of the civic groups and stuff, but the program's still there, it's, it's not as visible as it was at one time.
Does she need to talk to V-Dot about that?
Um, I, I'll, I'll get in touch with the residency on that.
Yeah, do that.
And make sure there's no objection to that. Now, I don't think they won't adopt the highway on primary roads, just on secondary roads. That, that is one of the things, because of the volume of traffic on primary roads. They may, that may not be an issue now, but in times in the past, it has been.
Well, if it is, then what we do, got the primary roads, because that's what everybody sees, it's not from here, it's passing through. And if we can't, on the issue of the contractors, do it, if we've missed the opportunity now to bid it out and to get it done, which we, we may have, I mean, it's kind of late in the game now to, to bid it out, uh, what's your all's thoughts on bidding it out and paying it out to the general fund? Or are you better off to just hire somebody whose job is to pick up trash?
I mean, one person's not gonna make that big a dent. I think you need a, a bid out to a contractor or somebody that's got two, three, four employees that can make a dent.
I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah, I'm with you there, 'cause with all them inmates, you know, they wouldn't travel very far back when they were picking it up.
But is your all's opinion that we need V-Dot's approval to have contractors do it?
Well, I don't know about that. I mean, I, I don't, I have no knowledge of whether or not we need their permission or, that's, that probably could answer that better than me.
My good feeling is if they had an issue with it, they should have sent an email back, and, and they didn't. And I, I don't feel like we can keep the trash in county that, that the citizens don't like because V-Dot doesn't respond to the email.
Well, because they're not picking up their own tray.
Exactly.
And again, it wasn't that he didn't respond, he just said he was out at the time, and he would get back to me after he researched it. So, uh...
Put the people out there and then they can research it to stop it.
That's the way I feel about it.
Well, think about it, though, if you sign a contract with somebody, then they make us stop, and we, we got to honor the contract and pay what...
Well, we don't have to accept a contract or even offer a contract yet if we solicit bids on it and make it clear in the advertisement that we don't, which, for services, we wouldn't have to accept any bid, the lowest bid that came in, just if it was goods, uh, we would have to.
You're not required to accept any bid. You have the right to reject any and all bids, if you decided not to follow through with it.
Well, Cindy, what kind of contractors are you talking about? I don't know any contractors that do work like that. Well, I don't either, now, but we, we had talked about it, and I mentioned to you all one of our things, that I had talked to some people in lawn care business, and they said it would be a great thing for them to do in the off-season to pick up trash with their crew. And I had one of them tell me the other day and said, Joe, I haven't do anything on that trash, uh, on, being that trash.
What, what kind of business did he have, you said?
Lawn care.
Lots.
You got the people mowing the grass on the side of the road? That's the kind of job.
Pick it up.
I'll try to have some definitive answers from V-Dot by the end of the week.
I, I'd like to take some action on this next month, one, one way or another, even if it's a one to four, I, I just wanna be able to say that I tried to do something, and I know we all want to do something, and there is no perfect scenario or plan, but I just wanna say we tried.
I think V-Dot's gotta know about it. You put a contractor, if you put people out there picking up the trash, and they, right off the bat, V-Dot's gonna say, well, who is this and who approved this? I mean, I mean, it's, it's their responsibility.
Did they approve it when the litter coordinator started picking it up with the probation officers?
Certainly not, but, uh, V-Dot was typically the one who picked the bags up.
Yeah, they are. Did they authorize us to do it?
Yeah.
Who authorized that?
I mean, that worked out with litter control. I wasn't involved in it, but I mean, they knew they were running that program.
I see.
Because they were picking the trash up, and even on their, uh, program with, uh, assigning probationers to roadways, V-Dot provided the bags. BDOT provided the bags for it.
I just can't see what the difference is between a private citizen who's on probation picking it up as a punishment and a private citizen picking it up and we pay it. I, I don't get the legal difference and nobody's pointed to any law that says you have to get BDOT's blessing to do that or that there's some difference in those two scenarios. But I, I mean, I'll, I'll aggress that. I, I want to do something on it next month. On the cans at the schools, I notice that they don't keep their lids down on their dumpsters at the schools. Can we draft a letter to Dr. Austin and ask him to circulate something and tell him to use the lids that are provided?
Yeah.
On the lids on the trash cans in the normal convenience centers, I've noticed that I drive by and the lid, and the trash dumpster is full, the lid's open. Then the next day, the same trash can has the lid open again, but you can't put any more trash in it. So when it rains, it's just sitting there getting rained in for no good reason. Could you have Gary Collinsworth maybe give some direction to people managing those that once it's full, close the lid and leave the lid, uh, closed?
If it, unless it's a site where they dump every day and maybe it's been dumped and filled back up the next day. I, because a lot of times they open, you know, they use the same cans.
The weekends, for example. They're not running on Saturdays and Sundays.
No, if it's on weekends, that's, I'll, I'll have him address that.
And on the issue of that, I got a picture of one this weekend and I had noticed Dryden, Dryden and Ben Hur, uh, were running over, looked terrible. And we keep having this issue. Mr. Baker complained about it when he was here one time. I don't know how many times I've had people sending pictures of the trash running over on the weekends. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. But this Saturday thing, not running a trash truck on Saturday, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But, but I would like for either somebody to run the truck, truck on Saturday and get the hot spots. Ben Hur, Jonesville, Dryden, it seems to be one of the worst, Woodway. Or at least be on call, but come Sunday evening, there's no reason. Somebody sent me a picture and said, where am I supposed to throw my trash? And there legitimately was nowhere to throw the trash and the, the ground looked terrible. I, I just don't want people to see that passing through Lee County and I don't, I don't really hit the point. And then I, I got a call from Wayne Martin recently and he was saying they cover us up on Mondays, but the rest of the week, we're not really that busy. So I, I don't see what the issue is with running the truck for half a day or a whole day on Saturday and then giving that employee the following Monday off or giving them the Friday off.
They typically take the Thursday off the forward if they're going to do that when they were running Saturdays because that's a slower day. Uh, was the conversation you had with Mr. Markham several weeks ago?
I'm gonna say two, I'm gonna say.
We met with him probably four weeks ago and implemented, he began to implement at least three weeks ago, a difference in the route and where they bring, bringing in less volume on Mondays and pushing it all the way through the week. So we're attempting to do that. Now, we can't control contractors that bring in debris and stuff. There's the root project at Dryden that's underway. And there's the project that's underway at the hospital and I think they've been in bringing in quite a bit of tons. We can't control the flow on that. We can only control what we haul. But we are making an effort to spread that. We, we met with him for probably an hour and a half or longer up here one day.
What about the effort on Sundays to not have the trash dumpsters looking terrible? People don't have any place to throw the trash. Is there any effort being made on that?
What do you, I mean, what do you mean?
Just the problem I'm describing.
Well, unless we go back to Saturday pickup. If the board wants to go back to Saturday pickup, that's, I mean, we'll implement it.
That, that's not gonna help Mr. Markham, him saying he's getting hammered on Monday.
I'm mostly concerned about helping county not look.
Now, oh, Mason, I agree with you. I was gonna stop at Ben Hur maybe Saturday. And I said, no, they were full. I went up to Jonesville Convenience Center and it was full. I had to, I had one that had a lid on it. And I opened the lid and there was room to throw the trash in there.
And I'm not asking for the whole crew to work on Saturday.
No, it's only, it typically was only one man that worked on Saturday.
But I mean, how many spots can he hit?
Uh, they hit again what they call hot spots. They, they go to the ones that get the higher volume. And the whole premise in trying to back off of that was cost savings, less mileage, more apparel on the truck, less fuel used, things like that. Instead of running six days a week, just running five. So, I mean, it's, it's a trade off. It's a trade off with costs and cleanliness.
Do they rotate that guy's name or is it?
It's a different man every Saturday again, as far as the ones that are capable of handling the garbage truck.
I appreciate the attempt on cost savings, but if a truck can haul 18 cans and there's 18 cans at Jonesville next to the transfer station and they're full like they were this weekend on Saturday, why can't they be hauled 400 yards over to the transfer station and dumped? Same thing with Ben Hur. There's more than enough cans at Ben Hur when they're full like they were this weekend to fill the truck up. So I, I don't see that there's a cost savings in waiting till Monday or Saturday when your truck would be full. I mean, if, if you're running around getting a, a fourth of a load at each site, so you get a whole load to drive back to Jonesville, I'd get it. But on Saturdays, if they'll just focus on Dryden, which is consistently run over, Woodway, Jonesville, Ben Hur, I don't know if you've got one or not, but, um, just the hot spots.
I, I've just noticed in the last few weeks that these places fill them up on Saturdays and Sundays like, I mean, this, that's not been the normal. It seems like there's just been a surge in the amount of garbage that's been, uh, thrown out of these places.
I make that form of motion to have eight trucks run on Saturdays and get the hot spots.
I'll take that. Take out a motion in a second. Hollin, favor.
On the MBOs, uh, is that something we need to take up in close session? Anybody have an opinion about that? I guess y'all saw the quotes on those. I know you did.
I'm, uh, I'm not the rest of the board's saw, honestly. Guess we can take that up in close session if you want to.
That's all I got.
You got anything? Got anything else? I got just a couple out here. And, and Nate, did you, did you hear anything from the rescue squad thing today? Or what they were requesting from the other?
Uh, they were meeting with them at five o'clock this afternoon. Or a meeting with the representatives of that company at five o'clock this afternoon. For those of you that may not be aware, the company originally that they've gotten quotes from, they, uh, they got follow up quotes last Friday. Everything sort of blew up over the weekend. I did something yesterday that I'd never done before and that was to rescind the purchase order. They, the, all the rescue squads were in agreement that they would not deal with that company further, so we was left at that. And I, I think there's a lot of, maybe some miscommunication, uh, but the negotiating was, was done by them. I think they provided POs saying that county would provide up to 250,000 per unit. So they are working with a different vendor now and trying to get that nailed down. And I instructed one of those members today that when they did sign sales contracts, I'll issue a PO and not deal.
So what, the other company went way up the price?
Well, there was some price changes. Now, I think somebody was just miscommunication on what to be inspected again with.
I think so too.
All it's come through. Ultimately, I think led to a loss of trust and they just felt like they didn't want to deal with them.
I'll make this statement without going into too much detail, but, but that original retailer, you know, came back with one of the, one of the squads today with the original price. I don't know if he's gonna do that with the rest of them or not. I don't know, but that, that was what I told today, so. Okay, and then, uh, of course, Cindy's already, Nate's already questioned. We have one question that I have up here. And I brought this up and I, I'll break it up again just because I didn't get to bring it up, but we talked, I brought this up to out there just a little bit of communication and I won't bring it up because Robert didn't get here. And I don't think, uh, Charles got to hear it all, but I just wanted to break up the discussion that the litter control operator had, had asked me just about the thoughts about what the board's thought were about letting her take her truck back and forth. So that was just a discussion I wanted to break up. She asked me to bring it up to the board and see what their, the board's thoughts were on, you know, taking it back and forth. I don't know if I got a.
I don't think. Yeah.
You, was you, did you get it?
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't know if Robert, what, what you thought about that.
I have no problem with it.
But like I say, I had no problem with it. You know, I, I know we had a little bit, just a small discussion, but just, uh, just because I was bringing it up to let them know I was gonna bring it up. That's one of the things I would want to do and, and it kind of goes back to what Cindy was talking about. About maybe possibly picking up some of this stuff if we get somebody, you know, that, that truck can be, be used more and utilized more like that is more hopefully, but. But I would, I would make that motion to try that if it works out, you know, to, to, to let, you know, let the control officer, you know, use the truck to take it back and forth home. Only for back and forth home, no other use whatsoever, only just back and forth use.
Yeah, fix that one for that.
Yeah, only for back and forth use. And that, that would be my motion to try that, but you know, that's, that's just my form of motion.
Only problem, I say you don't have any way to control it before she goes to it. And then you're gonna have to start letting every other department take those vehicles home.
Well, the only, the only ones we got is Zane and.
They don't have a vehicle.
I really could have. I mean, they've got a vehicle out here if they wanted to take it home. I've never had a problem. I think that should, I don't know if I've said it all well.
What county employees don't take their vehicles home now? Does Tom take his?
No.
Did Aaron Feat take his home? What other county vehicles are there that, that are assigned to a person that don't go home?
See, most vehicles are assigned to a department, not necessarily to an individual other than the sheriff's office. Building, building inspection has a vehicle. Litter control has a vehicle. They have pickups at the transfer station. Economic, uh, or community development, actually the EDA owns that vehicle. But it's never, it hadn't been taken home either.
Do they pay the gas on it?
No, we pay the, pay the maintenance on it. They pay insurance and we pay the, the gas and usage on it.
On the transfer station, do those vehicles go home to somebody?
No, not unless the only time if one goes home, if Gary may call, if somebody's not gonna be able to close the convenience center, one of the operators or something has a, has a, an issue at night or something and he's gonna have to go close it that night, he may take the vehicle then and get that, keep having to go to house, come back and get it and then go down there and close it.
What are the three or four vehicles over there that are?
Uh, a couple of pickups. I mean, well, the one pickup and then, uh, they've got the ton truck. That's about it, yes.
Vince has a vehicle.
Pardon?
Vince has a vehicle.
Vince has one. He, he takes it back and forth. Uh, it's actually, uh, the vehicle is actually tied over the sheriff's office. And they make it available for him to drive and then he requested permission a few years ago because he'd been called out after hours at different times on vehicles, on the sheriff's office vehicles. So he was, he was allowed to take his home. Everything else stays in park.
Is animal control game, do they, do they?
They, they take theirs back and forth because they're on call.
Yeah.
So we don't have a second, so we'll move on. I had a request. I had a, a lady call me about up air that new pocket dump site thing. You might talk to Gary about it. I, I never realized this. A lot of times I threw my trash in his dumpster. I never realized that some of them were a little lower than the others. But I think if, or I guess it's, you know, tried to make it look real good where it's due and I think most all of them are about the same height. But they said that there were one, that there was one that was a little lower than the rest of them that had, had the, the, the lady that called me, I think her parents were, you know, not real healthy and she was worried that they couldn't, when they dropped their trash off, they'd have difficulty getting it up in the higher ones and it would be much easier if, if we could maybe keep a couple of the lower ones in, in there just for them because that's where they dumped theirs at. And I told them that as, and I apologize because I didn't, I didn't have a clue that there was that height difference. I thought that was about the same.
And any, that point is creating to the.
Probably different brands.
And I'd like to say I, I didn't have a clue, but I prefer the ones that are lower because that's where I don't mind trash because that it's harder for the buyer to get in that.
Well, that brought me to.
I can understand what, what that difficulty is.
Yeah.
Uh, in Michigan, the pocket site, uh, we'll be getting quotes on paving very shortly to, to get that site entrance paved. And that's, the commercial entrances have to have paving from BDOT, I mean, BDOT requires paving also. We left that one unpaved initially to compact thing, get that entrance packed in good and get it tight before we put paving on top of it. But he will be trying to get quotes on paving before long.
And that's beautiful, though.
Yeah. It'll be shutting down or we'll be spreading it in.
Okay, I think that's all I had.
I forgot, but I worked with, worked with folks.
They done one third?
Oh, they did.
You take one by another.
I, I forgot to, on Labor Day, we voted to leave the trash dump open. From the day before, we voted to leave it open and just the guy not come in on Labor Day to be open. And then he shut it the next day like normal. I didn't see any issue with that. Uh, I thought it was a good thing and I feel like it went okay. We ought to do the same thing on Veterans Day, which comes up before our next meeting.
I'm okay with that, but I think we need to probably amend that to like the guy that runs my site. Where we have such a bear issue up there, uh, it's just a big mess for him and, you know, that it's left open like that, the bears are in there all night long. And he's got a big mess to clean up and he came to me and I told him it's his site, he wants to open it up. That's up to him, but we don't, you know, to give them an opportunity to keep it closed. I mean, it doesn't cost anymore because he does, you know, on his own anyway. So, I mean, I, I saw, well, I know how to solve that then because it took a lot of work off of him to, just to come up there open and then close it again. He said he had no problem with that.
So you want to, you, you're all right with it but for the Kiyoki site?
Yeah, or any other site that somebody might be having a bird problem with or something like that. I mean, I would leave it open to let the, whoever the manager of the site is, if they want to come in to.
That's the way I feel.
Dryden. Dryden, right. The, you know, the ones that want to close, I'm fine with that.
As long as it's open on the holiday, as, as long as they're willing to come back in.
Yeah.
If they feel like it's more beneficial to them to come and close it overnight, keep the bears out and come back the next morning and open it to keep extra work from itself.
And I can understand it because I've been opening, as you know, I've been opening and then closing it up there for over a week. So I know exactly what, what he, I know what he talking about.
I, I will amend my motion to as you stated.
I appreciate that.
If it's just for Veterans Day?
Well, that's the next holiday and the next and after that's Thanksgiving, but we'll have a meeting before Thanksgiving. And I could make the motion to, to cover Thanksgiving too, if y'all are comfortable with that. too, if y'all are comfortable with that.
Okay, like I say, as long as we got amended to let the operator...
Well, I'll make that motion for Veterans Day and Thanksgiving.
Well, okay, so, uh, Thanksgiving Day is typically the only time they're closed, so to leave it open Thanksgiving Day.
That's right.
Okay.
Second, hold it in favor. Not any of them.
Uh, actually, there is another holiday coming up, Election Day.
Well, I saw that, but I didn't think you voted for that.
Well, it's, it's a state holiday now. Uh, General Assembly removed Lee Jackson Day and said Election Day every year. We used to just be closed for local Election Day once every four years, but now it is a state holiday, so Election Day would be another.
I'll make the same motion for Election Day.
Well, just amend...
Right, amend the motion.
Okay. And Mr. Bob, will your second stand?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor, stand. And, uh... Yeah, that's it. Ready, go in closed session.
Make motion when we go in closed session, suit two point two dash thirty seven eleven seven, A one three six and seven.
You wanna add the, the, the B O?
That was six.
That was six.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aha.
End of vote.